We'll have a moment of silent meditation and pledge to the flag. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Call to order this meeting at the Monnigay County Commission for Wednesday, January 29, 2020. All three commissioners are present. We will first have consent and approval.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We have 26 exonerations for $7,670.98, vouchers General County Fund, $38,013, coal severance, 93626, 911, 93496, Chestnut Ridge Park, $4,049382, Mason Dixon Park, 30607, transportation levy, $56,4388, fire levy, $80,027987, recreation levy, $87,16553, and library levy, $13,85059. Assessor's valuation, 99619, I'm sorry, 99616. Purchasing card vouchers, General County Fund, $8,89776, magistrate court, 7518, 911, 10946, home confinement, 22351, Chestnut Ridge Park, $3675, Mason Dixon Park, $3856, assessor's valuation, $47336, for a voucher total of $293, $24885. The position vacancies for boards and authorities, the Western Board of zoning appeals, Monnigay County Planning Commission, Monn County Development Authority, Camp Monthly Advisory Board, Monn County Band Delapidate Enforcement Agency, Mason Dixon Park Advisory Board, Mountain Line Transit Authority, Region Six Planning and Development Council, and Historic Landmarks Commission. The fiduciary orders for January 29, 2020.
Move for approval?
Second.
Been properly moved and seconded for approval. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Move on to introduction of new employees. Sheriff Palmer, you're up first.
Good morning.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Sheriff. Thank you.
We have today Mr. Lucas Cubic, who will be starting February 1st as a full-time home confinement officer with full benefits at a starting salary of $2,405.74 per month.
Move for approval?
Second.
Been properly moved and seconded for approval. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Glad to have you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Dana Johnson.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dana.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Dana.
I'm here to introduce Garrett Stansberry as a new employee with your permission for the Monnigay County K-9 Adoption Center as a full-time dog warden. He will work 40 hours a week, and he'll be entitled to full benefits. Our start date's up in the air right now, because I'm thinking February 1, but that's a Saturday, so probably February 3, at a rate of pay of $24.5 per year.
Move for approval?
Second.
Been properly moved and seconded for approval. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dana.
Welcome and thank you. Are there any other introductions of new employees? Seeing none, we'll move on to comments from the public. We're now open for comments from the public. You'll have three minutes. Please identify yourself and state your opinion.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Mike Paul, I'm the county GIS administrator and floodplain coordinator. I just wanted to touch base on a little bit of information in regards to the 2020 census. I've created a little bit of a package here for you if I can hand these out real quick. We've been in conversation, working with the city of Morgantown, as well as W, in regards to the 2020 census, and we have kind of, yesterday I put together a little bit of a package, just kind of showing the breakdown on what we're looking for timeline-wise for the 2020 census, and how we're moving forward from there.
Thank you.
There's some key pieces in this package I'd kind of like to touch on real quick, and that is, of course, the timeline and where we stand with the census, and also the map created in our GIS software that shows the main response areas for the county. It's right here. So, I just want to, like, again, I just wanted to show you the breakdown of the first page, which is the timeframe and where we stand, okay? Census Day is effective April 1. The mailer inside the package is kind of like a little reminder that will be sent out. I think it's page, it looks like page 3 I put together, and it starts with "Dear Resident", that's actually going to be mailed out, and they're asking you to respond by April 1, okay? So, this informational package was sent to us by Carol Bush, which is kind of the census rep for this area and working with the city of Morgantown and W, I think. And she has, I think, pretty much given us, you know, a breakdown. We can post these things to social media sites and also get those out to the public just to get the word out there. I just want to push the fact, please look at the monetary breakdown from the study from George Washington University on one of the pages I gave you. It's important, because West Virginia finished next to last in the 2010 census, and with a higher response rate, obviously those dollars will be, with a more accurate count, those dollars will be highly beneficial to the programs that that money goes to. So, just take a gander at that breakdown, and again, look at the map and look at those response areas from 2010. The map's not terribly user-friendly to kind of look at, but you can make out the downtown Morgantown area in the dark blue, and those are the areas where we had a low response rate in 2010, mostly around the W area. The reason behind that is, I'll just summarize here real quick. A lot of the word is trying to get out to the students need to be counted here in Monnigay County. You're counted in the residency you live in for the majority of the year. That's, they're here, obviously, pretty much nine months out of the year roughly, so they need to be aware that they are not counted at their mom and dad's home and wherever they may be from, so they'll be counted here in the city of Morgantown, Monnigay County. So, if you have any questions, feel free to get with me, okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike. Good job.
Any other comments from the public?
Good morning. My name is Jim Coats, and I'm here on behalf of the Western Chapter of the Sierra Club. As you may recall, I submitted a written response to some of the commission's concerns last week regarding funding from Longview for the Appalachian Stewardship Foundation and the Sierra Club's role in that. The foundation has asked that I not speak for them, so if you have questions about their programs, feel free to contact them, but if you have any questions regarding the Sierra Club and our enrollment in that, I would certainly be happy to answer those. I'm simply going to close by recommending that this commission get feedback from the relevant stakeholders that are affected by this. That certainly includes both labor and the environmental community, and I would call your attention to the filing just Friday from Longview before the Public Service Commission in which they came up with a new economic analysis that indicated the job estimates basically have been cut almost in half. They apparently made a number of errors in their initial reports, and I would call your attention to that. Our major concern, of course, is the greenhouse gas emissions from that facility. I want to be clear, if Longview proposed closing their existing coal-fired plant in order to get a gas-fired plant, the Sierra Club would probably support that, but you'd want to look very carefully at the impact of that to your budgets, as well as the employment in that issue, and they would certainly only want to accept such a deal if, in fact, there was an appropriate transition plan for the 150 workers at the existing Longview plant. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Sean Curry. I'm a 20-year member of Ironworkers Local 549, and also a representative of the building and construction trade in north-central West Virginia. I'd also like to reiterate that we have many people in this area that will benefit from the support received for the proposed Longview Power Project. There, just one aspect I wanted to touch on it, we do reach out to every school, all the trades in the area, reach out to all the area schools, to, most importantly, M-Tech in the area, to recruit people that are going to work on projects like this, that will help them retain good benefits, good pay, and be able to stay in north-central West Virginia instead of reaching out elsewhere for employment. Again, I appreciate you and thank you for your support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Mike Hudson, and as you may remember, I came before you last summer asking for your support for the installation of three fire hydrants on the Halleck Road. You may already know, but those have been installed and they're in service, and I just wanted to come and thank you guys for your support, and it's very much appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, we did not, no, thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, we will close the public portion. Thank you. Colleen, do we have grants? We do not. The public hearing, as you noted, on the agenda has been canceled this time. Correspondents?
I have none.
Okay. Unfinished business?
There is none.
Okay. New business.
Here we go.
Here we go. Please forgive me if I make a slight misreading error. To consider for adoption, a bond authorizing resolution and order of the County Commission of Monnigay County, which would authorize the issuance of its subordinate special district excise tax revenue refunding and improvement bonds, Series 2020A, University Town Center Economic Opportunity Development District, the Series 2020A excise tax bonds, and B, junior subordinate special district excise tax revenue refunding and improvement bonds, Series 2020B excise tax bonds, and together with the Series 2020A excise tax bonds, the Series 2020 excise tax bonds for the purposes of currently redeeming in full and defeating the County Commission's outstanding Series 2017B excise tax bonds, paying cost of the design, acquisition, construction, and equipping of additional development expenditures in the University Town Center Economic Opportunity Development District, funding a reserve fund for the Series 2020A excise tax bonds, paying capitalized interest on the Series 2020A excise tax bonds, fully funding the Series 2017A excise tax bonds supplemental reserve fund, and paying cost of issuance to the Series 2020 excise tax bonds. Approve the forms of certain documents to be executed by the County Commission in connection with the issuance of the Series 2020 excise tax bonds, and authorize the execution and delivery of such documents by the appropriate offices of the County Commission and other matters related.
Perfect.
Crystal clear.
Yeah. Move for approval?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded for approval. Is there any discussion?
Do we need any explanation from Tom?
I would ask if Tom Aiman might wish to come forward and give us a very condensed version in English of what I just read.
In English.
Thank you.
Tom Aiman Steptoe and Johnson, we're bond counsel to the County Commission on this new financing project for University Town Center/West Ridge. So, I will try to, I think you stated it very well, but I will try to give just a little overview. So, just by way of background for, you know, those that aren't familiar with it, so this district was formed in 2013, 1,450 acres, and again, this is an excise tax or sales tax district and not a property tip district, so there's also a property tip district over there, but that's not involved here. So, it, most, a lot of this involved, so the existing towns, university town center development was included at one time. Boundaries were amended subsequently to exclude the development that was already there, you know, the restaurants, the Walmart, Target, that area. So, boundaries were amended just to then include the new development after the district was created. So, in 2014, bonds were issued by the County Commission to basically finance the ballpark project, and then also the new interchange to Interstate 79. So, then subsequent to that, there was a 2017 bond transaction that basically refinanced the 2014 bonds and also provided some additional monies for infrastructure improvements in the district. The 17A bonds and also the 17B bonds. So, the 17A bonds are going to remain out there, they're going to stay in place. The 17B bonds were placed with the developer as a means to allow them to capture additional infrastructure investments that they were going to make in the district subsequent to 17, to allow the private development that's necessary to build out the district and create the revenues that repay the bonds. So, basically, the developer was going to, you know, the 17 bonds weren't funded at that time, so they were going to make their own investments and then credit those investments to the bond. So, that's what they've done subsequent to that period of time, and that's what's allowed the development to continue to build out over there to what you see today. So, the 2020 bond financing, there would be two series of bonds, an A series and a B series. The A series would be similar to what was done with the 17A bonds, so again, those would be underwritten by Key Bank through a limited offering and placed with sophisticated institutional investors. So, we're talking about your large bond funds and institutions that are familiar with this type of credit and this type of district and evaluating them, so we're not, you know, selling these bonds to small investors or, you know, mom and pops on the street. The B bonds, again, would be similar to the 17B bonds, so these would be placed with the developer, and again, a means for them to, as they make further developments, further investments in the district to build out the infrastructure, they will credit those investments to those bonds and allow them to, through repayment of those bonds in the future, to recap, recuperate those investments. So, there are some other things going on with the 2020B bonds, so we're refunding or refinancing the 17B bonds held by the developer. So, a portion of the 2020A bonds will be used for that purpose, okay? But only a certain amount of the 2020A bonds are going to be available and released at closing, and that is not a sufficient amount to repay all the 17B bonds. So, the remaining portion of the 17Bs will be exchanged for 2020B bonds, and so 2020B bonds will be credited for that portion that can't be refinanced at closing. We're also financing through those 2020B bonds, the remaining monies necessary to fund the supplemental reserve for the 17A bonds, so we can get that fully funded. That's necessary for the commission to be able to issue the 2020A bonds. We've got, obviously, our cost of issuance, and there may be some potential for, if all the capitalized interest on the 2020A bonds can't be funded from those bonds, a portion might be funded from the B bonds. So, as far as priorities here, 17A bonds are first lien, first-position bonds on all the revenues in the district, so those are the excise tax revenues. That's the security for the bonds. County has no obligation from any other funding source or from the general funds of the county to pay these bonds. There's a special account that's maintained in the state treasury for the district, there's a statutory lien on that account, and also all of the excise tax revenues. So, the 2020A bonds would then be subordinate bonds to those 17A bonds, so second lien, and those bondholders will clearly understand that that's what they're getting is a second lien on those bonds. The 2020B bonds will be junior subordinate bonds, so they'll be in a third position, and those bonds will be held by the developer. It will be clearly written into the documentation for those bonds that if the revenues aren't sufficient to make payments on those bonds, it doesn't constitute a default for the County Commission or on those bonds. So...
Simple.
Very simple, very simple. A couple notable aspects I wanted to mention on the 2020 bonds, as I mentioned, the lien positions. So, these bonds will have an opportunity to move up to be parity bonds with the 17As in the future. There are tests in the documents that need to be met in order for that to occur that have to do with coverage of revenues over debt service. So, at a point in time in the future, if the revenues in the district build up and they're sufficient to meet those coverage tests, generally 125 or 135, then those bonds would be moved up through the delivery of certain certificates and opinions to a first Another feature here is, as I alluded to, we're having a tranche structure for these bonds, three tranches, 1, 2, and 3. So, one, tranche 1, those monies are available at closing to refund the portion of the 17A bond, or 17B bonds that I mentioned before, fund reserves, et cetera. The, then there are tranche 2 and tranche 3, those monies, certain conditions or tests have to be met in order for those monies to be released. Those tests have, relate to the developer obtaining construction financing and getting necessary commitments for further build-out in the district, and the revenues from that build-out are, would then be projected to be sufficient to pay for the additional tranche releases, so therefore, if that development doesn't occur, we don't want those revenues, those additional funds released, so those monies would be used to redeem 2020A bonds, reduce the amount of outstanding debt so that it would be supported by the development that's in place and can support that debt. Quickly, proposed uses, I'll go over the numbers here with you in a minute, but, so the bond order itself also approves the main documents that the County Commission will be party to, and the execution of those documents by the president of the commission. That includes two supplemental trust indentures, a supplement to the development agreement that was put in place in 17, that's the agreement that the county has with the developer as to the means of access to bond funds and how the use of those funds is to be made and the requisition of monies. A limited offering memorandum, that's basically the disclosure document of the county that describes the potential investors, what it is they're purchasing, what their security is, you know, the aspects of the district, the development, how the bonds are going to be repaid, those sorts of things. Continuing disclosure agreement, so because of the nature of this type of financing and the investors that will be buying these bonds, there will be obligations for both the developer and the county to provide information after closing to an online sort of portal so that investors can keep track of the progress of development and the progress of revenues, and a prepayment agreement that provides the terms under which the existing 17B bonds would be repaid and also a portion credited to the 2020B bonds. So, I did want to go over just quickly some of the numbers. So, we have, again, the three tranches, I'll go over them by tranche, so tranche 1, and these are projected amounts because we won't know actual amounts until our pricing or sale occurs, which will be within the next couple of weeks. Par amount, $33 million, then you have some discount, you have a couple of project fund deposits, $1,002 and $1,000,000. Those are monies available to pay original issue discount and interest on tranche 2 and tranche 3 if those monies are never released. $20 million for the refunding of the 17B bonds. Cost of issuance, $2.1. Senior, so the funding of that 17A supplemental reserve fund, $1.1 million, the remaining portion then comes from those 2020B bonds, about $4.1 million. Debt service reserve, $2.8 million, capitalized interest, $3.7. That allows for interest to be paid on the bonds while the build-out is occurring and prior to the revenues being available from the build-out, and funding an administrative expense fund of $60,000. Then tranche 2, approximately $20 million, the project fund deposit there would be $16.7 million. The majority of those funds would be used to refund the portion of the 17B bonds that is being moved over to the 2020B bonds. So, again, that's repaying costs incurred by the developer in order to keep the development moving to where it is to current point in time. Debt service reserve, $1.7 million, capitalized interest, $2.3. Those two items, if those tranches are not released, those sort of tests aren't met, those monies would be used to, again, redeem bonds. Similarly, tranche 3, about $17 million, the project fund deposit there, $13.7, those would be new money, so as compared to the other tranches where we're talking about refunding, this would be additional investment, new investment that would be made in the district for infrastructure improvements. Debt service reserve, $1.4, and capitalized interest, $1.6 million. So, our total issue, looking about $71 million. The B bonds, just, this is, this is more straightforward, again, the bonds placed with the developer, third lien position, no default provisions, the $52 million par amount, the $33 million for a combination, well, 14 million to refund the remaining portion of the 17B bonds, $33 million in available additional project investments, cost of issuance, $50,000, and the remaining monies necessary to fund that 17A supplemental reserve, $4 million, and then again, potential for some capitalized interest funding, but that may or may not be necessary. So, that, that's sort of an overview. The bond order is the county's official action that would approve the issuance of those bonds and that structure and the execution of those documents that I mentioned.
Very well put, Tom.
Thank you, Tom.
And I'd like, like to extend the offer if Ryan would like to say a few words.
Yes.
The developer.
Of course, we haven't voted on it yet.
Yeah, I know.
Well, we're still, yeah.
That's okay.
We're still discussing.
We're still discussing, yeah.
Thank you. So, I'm Ryan Lynch with West Ridge. We're the developer of the district, and here with my grandfather, John, family-owned development company. So, I'll be fairly brief, just trying to, I guess, summarize Tom's summary, but more importantly, kind of apply it to kind of what you'll see in the district and how that will play out. I think the key for understanding that is something Tom said, that what the new development pays for all of these bonds, a large portion of what you're proving today is existing bonds that were issued in 17, and they're being refunded largely because we have projects coming on in 2020. We've announced Menards and Bass Pro, both of those will be starting construction in 2020. Menards, probably late, late spring, perhaps early summer. The road and utility extensions were started last summer and are well underway, certainly enough for them to be able to hit the ground running when they're ready. Bass Pro will follow shortly thereafter. You've likely... You've likely seen, or everybody's likely seen, the pad being reconfigured down along the interstate. So, those are the two. There's some additional retail that will be announced in the near term, but those are the two anchored tenants, as they're called, that are really prompting the ability to do these bonds. I'm not the bond expert, but I'm told that it's a very good time to issue the bonds based on the markets. So, that has worked out well, that our retail is coming online to allow this to happen now. Again, they're primarily refunding bonds of the A bonds, approximately, that are around 70 million, 60 million or so are refunding. What they're refunding is all the money that's gone into the infrastructure that you've seen over the last couple of years, both what I was talking about, the extensions to Menards, as well as the road to the Business Park going from 153 North, which we're also planning to have two office buildings open there in the next 45 days, as well as Leidos, which is on the opposite end of the project, is now currently open and operational. They're getting set up. I'm not sure of the exact head count, but there's a lot of people up there, and I know they're planning a grand opening in the near term. So, while it is primarily refunding, there is one new project that I'd like to briefly highlight that'll be funded by this. Most people are aware that DOH is planning a reconfiguration of the exit 155 interchange. That project's now 66 million funded by the DOH. From what we understand, it's anticipated to start sometime in 2021. And what we're planning with a portion of these bonds is a complementary road improvement project, improving access to Myland Park. And really, we'll pick up just west of where 155's project ends and take those improvements to the entrance to Myland Park. There'll be some more details to come on that over the next couple of months, but it's also planned and expected to start sometime in '21, really in concert and complementary to that 155 reconfiguration project. So, besides that, just appreciate the commission's support and your work. I mean, it is a fairly complicated transaction, and you guys have committed to understanding it and being involved, and that takes a lot of time and energy, and we do appreciate that. We're excited about the 2020 to 2021 projects. I should highlight, just to be clear, that while those Menards and Bass Pro are planned to start this spring and early summer, they'll open throughout 2021. And believe that. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to assure the public that this is a conservative issuance with regard to the tests that have to be made and the reserves that have been set up. This is really something that I, I think we've worked very long and very hard on this. And having signed all the 2017, I know that you're going to have to start doing a hand workout for what you have to sign for these bonds.
If we could also, I do want to thank Kerry and Rob from Cruze Associates. And I think what the public needs to know is while we were in Charleston, up until 11 o'clock at night, they were still working the final plan. So, you'll see, this just didn't happen overnight. This took a long period of time. And I also want to thank Ryan and John, who I hear is going to be 40 on Friday again. So, congratulations, but we really appreciate, we couldn't have done it without you willing to work with us. And I think that's what the public needs to know. This just didn't, it was everyone working together, and we appreciate that. I don't know if Sean wanted to say something.
Personally, I want to thank Ryan and John and your family and all your employees for all your hard work. Rob from, step-toe from Cruze and Associates, Kerry Cecil, all your work, Tom, you and Jason's work. I mean, there's a lot of people behind the scenes, the individuals from Munichap and the Key Bank individuals, everyone that, you know, has been really working this to get this bond issue through with, you know, the amount of time that we did when we first started talking about. It's been a heroic effort, and I really appreciate everybody's support.
That being said, I will call for the vote. All in favor of this issuance?
Aye.
Thank you. I still want a wake-ment. Just so you know. Okay? B, to consider a request by Chief Judge Deborah Skedera for the use of courtroom number three by Judge Glodges in conjunction with his forensics class on certain dates in February, March, and April.
Move for approval?
Second.
Been properly moved and seconded for approval. All in favor?
Aye.
C, consideration to provide funding to the Mid Ohio Valley Regional Council in the amount of $250.
Move for approval?
Second.
Been properly moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
D, consideration to approve a request for emergency funding for the Greater Morgantown Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Move for approval?
Second.
Been properly moved and seconded for approval. All in favor?
Aye.
E, to consider for approval the request to provide a letter of support to accompany the bid package being submitted to the American Legion for the 2021, 2022 National Regional Tournament.
Move for approval?
Second.
Been properly moved and seconded for approval. All in favor?
Aye.
Consideration to approve a memorandum of understanding by and between the Myland Park Foundation Incorporated and the County Commission of Monongahia County for the management of the Monongahia County Extension Services and 4-H Center and intent to improve land for future use.
Move for approval with discussion?
Second.
And there's, I wanted to point out, there's two MOUs here, and these have been sitting on my desk waiting for me to finalize them. So, we needed to get them in place now that we have our building and we have tenants in the building. The first MOU is an operational MOU where Myland, or Centers on behalf of Myland Park is, will manage the building for us and help us as we, as we move into the first year of operations. This is just a disagreement. We originally were going to do it for this year, but we're already, you know, we're already in February, so this agreement extends through June 30, 2021. At that point, we can reevaluate how we, how we provide this support to the building, and it will be done on a yearly basis. And the second MOU is an MOU where we did some improvements to areas adjacent to our building, and we wanted to make sure that those areas, any future use of those areas would be specifically used for agricultural purposes. So, when we agreed to improve that land, we entered, we needed this MOU so that we have that understanding that the, we kind of have right of first refusal on that land, but the most important thing is it's only used for agricultural purposes.
That's it. Okay? Thank you. It's been properly moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And lastly, to consider setting dates regarding a proposed text amendment to article 1100.5C2 of the West Run Planning District zoning ordinance for first reading, second reading, and then public hearing.
So, move.
Second.
Been properly moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Did you want, yeah.
Did you want to make the discussion?
February 12 will be the first reading.
Okay. Sorry.
February 26 will be the second reading and public hearing.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Is there any other new business?
No, sir.
Good.
Hearing none, we'll move to reports from elected officials. Kerry? Sheriff?
Uh-uh. All right. Just want to give you an update, report from 2017 delinquent personal property taxes. And we have approximately 77% have been collected. And if you have any questions on that?
I have numbers.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, give them the numbers.
The numbers.
Thank you, Kelly.
So, we did a report.
Thank you, Kelly.
Just to compare the last four years. So, the most recent report that we, the numbers that the sheriff gave you was from 2017. So, beginning January of 2018 through December of 18, or 19, sorry, it's, we began collecting the delinquent taxes. So, our average is about 77 to 78%. You'll notice that in '16 and '15 that we were well below that, but that is due to the bankruptcy number, if you'll look there.
Okay.
And those we can't, we are not allowed to pursue in the process which we do it. Phil Magro in the prosecutor's office has filed for us to, you know, collect that. However, we cannot pursue them because of bankruptcy, but just wanted to kind of give you an update. And the 77% is 77% of the delinquent taxes.
Yes.
Not of all personal taxes.
Correct.
It's a pretty, pretty good number. And actually, the system which we use is now being used by six or seven other counties who have recently contacted us because they've either never pursued it or have never had any luck with it. So, we're helping them and letting them use our methods to pull the money.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you. Kerry, do you have any report?
No. Well, I will give you an update. Our candidate filing period ended, and I believe that we have approximately 108 candidates that's going to be on the ballot from President of the United States down to Board of Education and Conservation District Supervisor. So, we will move forward with, we'll be doing a selection for their position on the ballot in February, and we're continuing to register voters for the primary election.
Thank you. Any other report from elected officials? Hearing none, we'll go to Tom.
Okay, I have three items. Last several days, all three county commissioners went to the CCA WV meeting in Charleston. And there are two issues I just want to bring up that I thought was really important. And I think the sheriff will be pleased to hear this in a way. We were down there talking about the jail bill, and we were first told that 52% of all individuals in the jails were waiting for trial and had not had a hearing. So, with that, the governor surprised everybody with this quote, and he said, "People are sitting in jail and have not had a hearing. We must have the state now and the cities take over some of the burden of the counties," which was a shocker, which we were real pleased to see, and we're working to hear what exactly he's going to do. But I thought you'd find that really interesting. The other was that the North Central Caucus did meet the Road Caucus, and not only was yesterday Samantha Stone meeting with the state DOH, but we also were finding out more about the DOH state formula bill that was introduced by Monongahia County delegates, and now there's a twist again. So, we're trying to find exactly what's going on with the bill. And the third is that what we are going to continue to do is make sure that more funding and repair work and where that funding's going to come from after this year. So, this is, those are the three issues we discussed. The final thing is, I will be representing the county commission tomorrow, going with the CVB board members to Taylor County. They will be joining the Preston and Monongahia County CVB, and it's now Taylor's going to be part of that. That's my report.
Thank you. Sean?
I already talked a lot of what I was going to report about was our conference. Since Sunday, we've been down in Charleston. We had a lot of productive meetings, got a lot of good information. We had a lot of one-on-ones. We had the Senate President Mitch Carmichael come, spoke to our group and took direct questions. Robert Hanshaw come and talk to our group, took direct questions. Revenue Secretary Hardy, the Tax Commissioner that, I'm going to, I can't remember his last name, Mark Mucow.
Mark something.
Yeah. It's, gave us a little bit of background behind the inventory tax. While we were down there, it seems apparent that that legislation is really changing every day because I got the impression that the governor and the two Senate, or the House and the Senate leaders were not on the same page. So, but there are, there is a lot of discussion about that, and that's one we're paying attention to really closely. Met with our delegates at our reception, met with a lot of, Auditor McCuskey came to our reception. So, we met a lot of other, and again, we had a lot of people, a lot of people asking us questions about things going on in Mon County. There, you know, there's so much going on here that every time we go down there, we kind of like, it's an education process of letting people know about what's going on in Mon County. Today is West Virginia Day, or I'm sorry, Mon County Day at the West Virginia House. We obviously are here for our meeting, but there's a good contingent of people down there for that today. Since last week's meeting on Thursday, as you all know, we had an interview, the three of us did an interview on AJR, and then at night, we had the chamber dinner. Friday, we had some work sessions. Obviously, I just mentioned the conference. Today, we have regular day, whatever regular is, because we've been pretty busy around here. Tomorrow, I have a board health meeting with the Health Department, and Saturday, we have some staff meetings, start of our Board of Review and Equalization meetings, and I also have a meeting with, meeting with the Assessors Office. Next week, we have our extension building meeting and another, it looks like another full week. In general, that's all I have to say. I'd like to wish my daughter, Gwen, an early birthday. Her birthday's tomorrow, it's her 14th. And my other daughter, a belated birthday, her birthday was on the Friday when she turned 19.
Happy birthday. I will remark that the commission dinner was a remarkable success last Thursday. There was well over 750 people, and people were actually showing up without reservations. So...
Chamber dinner.
Chamber dinner, I'm sorry. Yes. But it was very, you know, kudos to, you know, to the people who were putting this program on, and this is a remarkable improvement. Three, I've attended this for a number of years. Three, four years ago, this would only have been a 300 possible people attending this particular dinner. So, I did meet Friday with the Geospatial Committee stakeholders' meetings, and in the afternoon, did represent, along with the sheriff, FOIA request hearing in Judge Skedera's courtroom. Tomorrow, I do have a personal meeting set up with her, and we'll be discussing certain items. Regarding the conference, I always sit up front, and the reason, because I want to be able to make eye contact with those individuals who are speaking to us. And when the governor addressed us after he was done, I did approach him. I gave him my card, and I asked him that he please come visit us in Monongahia County. And he replied that he would. And upon leaving, looked at me and said, "I promise." Now, this is not a political statement. What we need, and I'm certain the people in this room would ascertain, that we need all the help that we can get to further the economic development, the roads, the infrastructure, everything that's going to be going on in this county, and that includes this governor at this time. So, when we bring him up here, I intend to show him not just this area, but all of the area of North Central and see what we can do to further our cause in Monongahia County and North Central West Virginia. Thank you. With that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So, adjourn?
Second.
We are adjourned. Thank you.